Oh, is that you? Okay. Good to see you. If you will, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for a couple of reasons.
Let's pray. God, I just want to thank you for tonight and thank you for this great city that we live in and it's got such a rich history and tradition. And a lot of great people have governed this city in years before. And I know that the Bible tells us that if we need wisdom, that we should ask you. And I know that these officials, I just pray for everyone that's here, everyone that's involved, God, that you would give them wisdom. I'm so thankful that we have people who have raised their hand and said, "I'll serve our community." And God, I know our community has a lot of needs. There's a lot of brokenness in our community. There's a lot of people who are hurting. There's a lot of homeless people. There's people out on the streets tonight. And we need to find some solutions. And I'm just thankful for these leaders that are dedicated to try and solve the problems that are in our community. And I pray that you give them wisdom to do that. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff?
Here.
Perkins?
Here.
DeLucy?
Here.
Robertson?
Here.
Van Camp?
Here.
Mayor Weir?
Here.
Any says and requests to speak tonight?
They're not.
Okay, there are no says and requests tonight, so this takes us to our consent agenda. Mayor Weir?
Uh, Mayor Weir, I move to approve the reports and recommendations of the city manager.
Second.
Are there any items any council member wishes pulled for separate consideration?
Hearing none, please call the roll. Councilmembers Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Doorty?
Yes.
DeLucy?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Van Camp?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. Consent agenda passes. That takes us to our non-ordinance action item. Madam City Clerk.
Bill number 20 dash 705, a resolution approving the recommendation of the Public Utilities Advisory Board to evaluate replacement of current energy production capacity within the Power and Light Department.
Okay, is there any discussion on this item?
Yes, Mayor.
Oh, yes. Houseman?
Yeah, there's several things that I just wanted to say about this item. And first of all, let me start out by apologizing to the council because the last city council meeting, I was with my daughter and son-in-law in Florida. I had the hotspot and I had called in, but we never could connect. And so some of the things that I wanted to say back at that meeting, I thought I would say tonight and take just a few minutes about the concerns with what the PUAB is asking. And also, I wanted to read a couple of things from the the Energy Master Plan that we had done in September 2018. So first of all, one of the concerns I have with the PUAB's request here is that there's not really any research behind it. So they're asking us to do something without having any experts or any opinions given by any of the experts. And so as a result, we're just asking, they're asking us to do something without any background material at all. And I plan to read a few things from this, at least this study, which was from some of the experts from Burns and Mack. I understand that they want us to totally cut out any local production of electricity. And so the second thing that I have a concern about is that we as a council and we as a city have never had a discussion as to whether we should produce any local electricity. I think that's a very worthwhile discussion for the council to have. And the pros and cons, we need to talk about the good and the bad of doing that. And also allow the public to voice their concerns, whether they want to see any production in Independence of electricity or whether they want all of that contracted out. And so the forum, a public forum, the place to have that is the PUAB. And last meeting, I was going to request publicly that the PUAB plan and offer a public forum to allow public input from all the citizens of Independence. Because I think we need to hear from everybody. We need those opinions. And I want to hear from some of the experts. The other concern I have about going ahead, and I think we are really going ahead to look at some of these things anyway, but going ahead without having a new management firm that's going to be hired to run IPL that should have some expertise and also have some input, I think is putting the cart before the horse. And so we're rushing to judgment like we've done so many times without having people in place that really can carry that out. And so we don't have the management in place yet for IPL. And we have not done the realigning of the rate classes, which I think is extremely important, not only for cost savings, but also streamlining the billing for IPL. So I mean, there's a whole series of things like that that we haven't done yet. And we really need to take the time and do our due diligence and get things in line and get the management in place. So the other concern I had was I would like an electrical engineer, an expert in transmission and production to testify. And I'd rather them testify to the PUAB. They are welcome to come and talk to the council as well. Reason is, is because I remember about four years ago when we were going through a lot of these studies with IPL, one of the electrical engineers, and I don't remember which company it was from, but he talked about differences in AC current. And he said, "There's a difference in locally produced AC current versus transmitted." And he said, "It's much more difficult to have a startup from zero for different types of equipment if you don't have any locally produced electricity because of the," and I don't remember the certain type of wavelength or something, but I'm not an expert in electrical engineering. And that's why we need that experience and that expertise to talk to us and tell us what we might be missing if there is no local production of electricity. We can't do it ourselves. We're not experts. But let's get the experts in here and let's find out. We're also probably going to miss out some on dependability. And that's what I wanted to read from the study that was done by Burns and Mack in September of 2018. It was called "The Energy Master Plan." I have a copy of it that I've made a lot of notes in right here. I'm going to read you just a couple of things from the conclusions that were in that study. Obviously, they recommended retiring the Blue Valley units as soon as possible. "The CGTs appear to provide low-cost capacity as well as local system reliability resources. IPL should continue to maintain the combustion turbines." That was their conclusion in September of 2018. "IPL should consider more regular test runs for the combustion turbines to troubleshoot reliability. They should consider air permitting adjustments, specifically prevention of significant deterioration, to eliminate operating risk with uncertainty around the definition of routine maintenance. They should reevaluate the combustion turbines in the next master plan. Continue monitoring the condition of the combustion turbines and the cost of maintenance against the cost to replace their capacity and the cost to perform transmission network upgrades triggered by their retirement." In other words, is the cost to replace that significant capacity, almost 100 megawatts, plus the, maybe the transmission network upgrades and the study by Southwest Power Pool? IPL should continue to evaluate the existing combustion turbine sites for repurposing with reciprocating engines. This will allow for continued evaluation and future master plans, prepare IPL for future on-system generation if and when it becomes needed for reliability or economics. Continued operation of generation resources within IPL's footprint provides, number one, protection against price separation between generation resource revenues and the cost of servicing load." I think I'll stop right there. So my concern is severalfold, as you've heard. And I would like some of this master plan perhaps to be at least shared and maybe discussed by the PUAB as well as having a public forum at the PUAB and having some experts come in like an electrical engineer. So that's the summation of what I would like to see done. If this is passed tonight, and I plan to vote against it, but if this is passed tonight, I would hope that those things will be done anyway. And in the process of this resolution anyway, it's probably at least a year and a half off. You know, even if we were to go ahead with this, we would have to have the study done by Southwest Power Pool about the transmission and the transmission cost. We would have to find capacity to replace it. I mean, all those things have to be lined up and the stars have to line up. For us to do it within a year, it would probably take a year and a half. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Just a couple of things that I wanted to share and also to ask the city manager. The PUAB has the authority granted by the charter to hold a public hearing anytime they want. And I mean, I think that's a, you know, I appreciate what you're saying. And I think that that, you know, always there is, when we give opportunity for public input, that can be very, generally, that's very helpful. But I think that we need to define what exactly we're asking for the input on. I certainly think the PUAB doesn't need our permission or direction to hold a public hearing. But I think it's our expression that we, that that might be the appropriate place for such input is a good one. But let's give some thought to exactly what we're asking for the public's input on. Otherwise, it may not be that helpful or productive. The Council Utilities Committee continues to meet. Adam Norris, our Assistant City Manager, had presented us with a priority list of seven different items that will be addressed, some within weeks and others within months, a year, maybe 18 months, two years at the outset. So some of the things, there's only seven items on that list. And some of the things that you referenced are included in that, like getting the management consultant on board, completing the rate study. We, so those things are on a timeline of priorities of when those are going to happen. And you're right, they come ahead of the discussion on the CTs, which I believe the recommendation of the committee, that is number six on a list of seven. So there's, to your point, a lot of things that need to happen ahead of any decision, certainly any decision on the CTs. Jim Nail, who's our interim director, gave us some wonderful insights and information about these. I think something that stuck out to me, and I think to many who were at the meeting, is we do risk losing reliability if we don't have these CTs or some sort of ready replacement for that energy capacity. So your point about dependability is well taken. That also comes with a price tag of a 36 million, about $36 million in transmission upgrades that could be necessary to fulfill that. Mr. City Manager, the way I read this resolution that has come to us from the PUAB is simply a reinforcement that we're going to continue to evaluate this issue. We know that something is going to happen in the next five to 10 years. Or, you know, provided nothing, you know, unforeseen takes place. We don't intend, it's my understanding from Mr. Nail, we don't have any big maintenance expenses expected to come up with these CTs, the inspections and the major maintenance. The report that we got presumes that we aren't going to do any of that. No, the report we got assumed that we would do some of that, and that would take us maybe 20 years. If we don't do any major inspections or maintenance of this equipment, we can expect it to last anywhere from five to 10 years. So the way I read this resolution is not forcing us into a decision. It's to say that we're giving the direction to you to continue to explore this, which we're already certainly taking steps down that pathway. So I'm not typically at the PUAB meetings, so I would just like maybe some clarification from the staff who is there. Is that what the PUAB intention is?
So when the council remanded this back to the PUAB a few weeks ago, my Assistant City Manager, Adam Norris, who oversees this particular city department, did have the opportunity to dialogue with the PUAB to clarify intent. And I do want to thank Adam and the PUAB for that. Words have meaning, and so we were very careful about how this was phrased. So the resolution, you know, when you boil it down to its essence, says, "evaluate all options, develop recommendations for the eventual retirement." I don't think this is putting us behind the gun to make a decision tomorrow, but I do think it gives us the opportunity to further look into this matter as it is one of the seven priorities identified in the IPL.
The eventual retirement could be in two years and five years and 20 years.
Correct. Correct. So many times, we've found ourselves behind the eight ball, though.
Whatever.
Right, you know. And so I think we can continue to engage the experts, like the council member has referenced, continue to have that dialogue. You know, we solved one part of our problem with the Blue Valley decision, but we still have the other side of this equation. And this lets us continue to research that and bring back meaningful dialogue for the council to make an informed decision at some point. That's appropriate.
In my opinion, it doesn't, this resolution is not in conflict with the work that the council is already directing, the work that the utilities, the questions that the Utilities Committee is assembling and posing to help, to lead us to a longer-term decision, which is most likely going to take place, you know, sometime well into the future. So do you see, is there anything in this that gives you concern that it's in conflict with the council's direction?
I think we are in a very advantageous spot at Power and Light right now in that we have made the determination to shutter Blue Valley and found a replacement option for that, a long-term option with the Oneta contract, the purchase power. We know the combustion turbines are aging, but they're functional today. And the way I read this resolution and the intent with which it's being submitted is, it gives us the direction to go research this matter further so that we can be prepared to make an informed decision without being forced into one before we're ready.
The way I understand it, and I don't want there to be confusion, is the PUAB does not want us to take our eye off this ball.
Right.
They want us to continue, not to get distracted by other things that may come up and to understand that this is an important decision that is not a crisis now, but could become a crisis if we don't properly prepare for it.
That's my understanding as well.
Councilman?
Yes. This resolution or bill should have been brought up about 25 years ago. Most power companies are 25 years into the future. We're a little late on this, but to clarify some of these, Councilman Robertson, on the, I'm not an expert by any stretch, never claimed to be one, but there's industrials and companies all over this world and they don't have power plants at every city to start up. So I don't think we have to go to another expert to figure that one out. Number two, these CTs are way beyond their time. And the only thing this thing's doing is getting this off the can and start figuring out what we need to do in the future. Two, five, 10, 15 years, 20 years, whatever, immaterial to me. But somebody needs to make a move. And I will be supporting this.
Yeah.
I too, I don't think that the picture being painted that these are, they're antiquated. It's said in every study, just as it's said about Blue Valley, that they're past their time. We are in a position because of the maintenance, and that was brought forward to the committee clearly and expressly. So it gives us some time. But they are past. It isn't that they couldn't blow up tomorrow and that we'd have, yeah, God forbid. But we have to start looking at this, and that's what this says. Instead of getting another expert to read from an expert that already had an expert. I mean, I assume there was an electrical engineer from the book you read. I don't need to be presumptuous about this, but we have to start now for the future and not be in the same position as having to maybe fund something in an astronomical amount. We're blessed in that we have people at IPL now who are running things. And we've gotten by. I don't think we can put things on hold for other entities to come in here just because they are going to be here. We got to move while we're, we can't wait on something that may come up, just as we have done in the past for another study. These questions is what was put to from our committee, and that's what's being brought forth. I think it's in the best interest of the city.
Any other comments or questions?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
We're about to get a management company. I think we can hold off on this. I don't see any reason to do it tonight.
Okay. Anything else?
Mayor, I just want to say one or two other things. The conclusion from this Energy Master Plan was that we not discontinued them yet. They talked about us waiting two to five years to catch our breath and get things financially stable. That was the whole purpose. So it's a bridge to the future. It's not the future. Because they talked about a number of different options. They talked about reciprocating engines to replace them. They talked about contracts. They talked about the possibility of batteries, battery storage. I mean, there were a whole bunch of possibilities. And those, some of those things will be coming online. Some of those will force us to make a decision over the next couple of years. Of the six combustion turbines, the H turbines were the oldest. The J turbines are 49, 49. The I turbines are 46, 46. And the H turbines are 46 and 44. All of them use fuel oil. Two of them, the H turbines, also use natural gas and are the ones that are fired up the most frequently. And the reason they said they were able to be used as a bridge for the next two to five years is because of the good maintenance that we have done on them. So we have done a great job of taking care of the equipment that we've had. And they said that a bridge to the future because at some point, if we replace them, we're probably going to have to bond between 100 to 150 million dollars to replace them with reciprocating engines. That's not a decision I think the city is in a position to make right now until our finances are a little more stable, not just at IPL, but also the city itself. And so I look at both the finances. I look at getting the management people on board. And hopefully, within the next two to five years, yes, something needs to be done, probably in phases. But most businesses don't replace all six of them and shut them down at the same time. And so let's use some wisdom in looking at this. And the only reason I mentioned about the different types of electricity is because I remember an electrical engineer talking specifically about that. I know nothing about that. But I think we should ask. I think we should know.
So we're all, from my standpoint, we're all saying the same thing. Mr. Norris has presented a plan to the Utilities Committee and to the PUAB, which has been distributed to the entire council, which puts these things in the exact order that you are recommending, is budget, finances, and, correct me if I go out of order, this year's budget, finances, hiring the management consultant, getting them on board, working. I'm going to miss a few, but down at the very bottom is this. So all of those things that you are, that I think we all agree on that need to happen first, will happen first. This resolution doesn't have any timeline associated to it in terms of when we have to complete this or begin it. We are all talking about the timeline of in the next two to five years that we're going to have to make this decision. This is not binding us to any decision tonight. I mean, quite frankly, with all due respect to our PUAB, I don't know why this resolution is particularly necessary. It's only reinforcing what we, the pathway that we are already heading down to start looking at this so we can avoid, you know, a big expense in the future that is going to be very expensive regardless of what this council or a future council decides. But I'm certainly willing to support it. We ask these volunteers to consult with us on these things. They feel it's imperative to tell us that, they think that this isn't something important and not to let it go by the wayside. And I think that's sound advice. But it certainly does not put this on some fast track. It's, you know, all of the things that you're recommending have to happen first. And I don't think that this resolution is in conflict with that. Is there any other comment or question? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Doorty?
Yes.
DeLucy?
Uh, no.
Robertson?
No.
Van Camp?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. Item passes. This takes us to our second readings. Madam City Clerk.
Bill number 20 dash 001, An Ordinance Authorizing the Purchase of a 100-foot Smeal Aerial Platform from Feldfire for $1,270,562. Second and final reading.
Is there any discussion on this bill?
Mr. City Manager, I believe this is the item I asked you about. Within the contract itself, it talks about the price being 1.207562. It's 63,000 less dollars. So how much money are we spending?
I'm going to ask the chief to come up and clarify that for us.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. Doug Short, Fire Chief. Yes, those numbers were transposed accidentally on the agenda. The numbers on the contract is the actual numbers.
Okay, so it's 63,000 less?
Yes, that's correct.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Doorty?
Yes.
DeLucy?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Van Camp?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. Ordinance passes.
Bill number 20 dash 003, An Ordinance Finding, Determining, and Declaring the Necessity of Acquiring General Utility Easements and Temporary Construction and Grading Easements for the Walnut Gardens Stormwater Improvement Project in the Crackerneck Watershed, number 70131809, authorizing the negotiation and imminent domain proceedings if necessary, approving the plans and specifications for the project, authorizing the use of experts as needed, authorizing and directing the execution of documents and the payment of funds to property owners or others holding property rights in conjunction with the project. Second and final reading.
Is there any discussion on this bill?
Not on this bill, Madam Mayor, but I did want, our audio has been lost twice now within the last 20 minutes. Could we please try and get it back up? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Doorty?
Yes.
DeLucy?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Van Camp?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. Ordinance passes.
Bill number 20 dash 004, An Ordinance Authorizing the Removal and Destruction of Municipal Court Records That Have Met All Requirements to Be Eligible for Such Destruction and Are the Subject of Circuit Court Administrative Order Number 2018 dash 22. Second and final reading.
Is there any discussion on this bill? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Doorty?
Yes.
DeLucy?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Van Camp?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. Ordinance passes.
Bill number 20 dash 005, An Ordinance Authorizing Final Disposition of Certain City Records That Have Met All Requirements to Be Eligible for Such Disposition. Second and final reading.
Is there any discussion on this bill? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Doorty?
Yes.
DeLucy?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Van Camp?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. Ordinance passes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Van Camp?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. Ordinance passes.
Bill number twenty dash zero zero six, An Ordinance Approving the Water Service Termination Cooperative Agreement by and Between the City of Sugar Creek, Missouri and the City of Independence, Missouri. Second and final reading.
Is there any discussion on this bill? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Doorty?
Yes.
DeLucie?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Van Camp?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. Ordinance passes.
Bill number twenty dash zero zero seven, Ordinance Terminating Tax Increment Financing Within the Redevelopment Area, the RSO redevelopment area, excuse me, established under the Recovery Sales Tax Increment Financing Plan, as amended the plan, dissolving the accounts in the Special Allocation Fund related thereto, and authorizing certain actions relating thereto. Second and final reading.
Is there any discussion on this bill? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Doorty?
Yes.
DeLucie?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Van Camp?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. Ordinance passes. Before we read the next two, which are pertaining to medical marijuana licensing and regulations, I would like to ask the state councillor, is there any, there was some, some news that was reported in the last several days regarding potentially some pending lawsuits. Is there anything that would, anything timing-wise with any kind of litigation that may or may not be happening, that would be beneficial for us to take immediate action on either of these items?
I'm, I'm not going to comment on pending litigation, however, you know, it is within your purview to look at this matter that we've looked at many times before and consider whether or not it, it's time to go ahead and take action fully tonight.
Okay.
But obviously, that's within the, the discretion of the council.
Okay, but you don't have any reason to feel that? There's any urgency in that?
I think having an ordinance on the books, which could be problematic, is not my preference for my client, so I can leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. Madam City Clerk?
Bill number nineteen zero five eight, An Ordinance Amending Chapter Fourteen of the Independent City Code pertaining to medical marijuana facilities.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to move to amend this ordinance by removing the special use permit items.
Second.
I moved and seconded to amend nineteen oh five eight to remove the requirement for a special use permit. Is there any discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
With, with the ordinance coming forward at twenty zero zero eight, first reading, is that the same ordinance that would have the special use permit removed from it as well? Or it's already, has wording that, has that eliminated, eliminated from that?
Um, I don't know.
Yes, it does. It has, it has the special, most of the special use permit in that business ordinance, oh, double oh eight, yeah.
Hold on.
It does have the special use permit in that.
Sure, just to clarify, the special use permit is included.
I'll answer to anything.
The special use permit provision is included in the ordinance that's in front of you tonight, which is an amendment to your zoning ordinance. It's exactly what you saw and what the Planning Commission saw in October. The provision that relates to business licenses has some requirements in it that are similar to what's in the, the special use permit requirements, but it's not a special use permit.
Gotcha.
It's a little bit different, but it does add extra regulation where you can require them to provide certain things before they can get a business license.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so there is a motion and a second to amend nineteen oh five eight to remove the requirement of a special use permit. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Doorty?
No.
DeLucie?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Van Camp?
No.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. Motion passes.
Bill number twenty dash zero zero eight, An Ordinance Amending Chapter Five Business Licenses of the Independent City Code Establishing Medical Marijuana Business Licensing Regulations. Bill number twenty dash zero zero nine, An Ordinance Authorizing a Contract with Interfab Power and Industrial Inc. for the Replacement of High-Service Pump Adjustable Frequency Drives at the Courtney Bend Water Treatment Plant for Seven Hundred and Four Thousand Two Hundred Dollars. Bill number twenty dash zero one zero, An Ordinance Authorizing the City Manager to Execute For and on Behalf of the City a Certain Pipeline License to Construct and Maintain a Water Line on Railroad Right-of-Way with the Union Pacific Railroad Company on Walnut Street West of Crane Street, Section One, Township Forty-Nine, Range Thirty-Two, Providing for Payment to the Railroad of Three Thousand Dollars, all in accordance with the Attached Pipeline License.
Okay, that concludes our agenda for this evening. We will go to councilmember comments. I'll start on my right with Councilmember Doorty.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Nothing this evening.
Councilmember Perkins?
Nothing this evening, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Huff?
Nothing this evening.
Councilmember DeLucie?
Mr. City Manager, this is the last thing you want to hear, but our taping and our broadcast ability, I have received multiple texts. We've been off and on both audio and visual throughout this entire meeting. It's really bad, and I think we've got to look at getting a better system. And I know now's not the time you want to spend some money, but I, I strongly suggest we at least look at some bids to see what is the cheapest we can get by with until we can get a new system.
We'll look into it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Robertson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to compliment the committee that puts together the Martin Luther King Junior Celebration. I was there last night with the mayor and Councilwoman DeLucie, and I thought it was an outstanding program. I've been to him for a number of years now. The speaker was, was, I thought, one of the best that we've had, and the choir, the Truman Choir, did an outstanding job. So thank you. Thank you for those that, that planned and put that on. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Ah, Madam Mayor and members of the council, as you know, I've been working on the homeless issue. I've pulled together key leaders in our community addressing the ongoing issue. One of the issues that's come to my attention that needs immediate solution is where to temporarily house the homeless in our community during extreme weather. This problem is complicated by the fact that our hotel partner that we used in the past for temporary lodging and housing is not currently in operation. I'm working with the members of the committee to find those solutions. I have further learned that there are faith-based groups who are trying to establish temporary sheltering. However, they contend that the city code is not allowing this to occur. I would like the support of the council to direct the city manager to present further information and recommendation to the city council for consideration.
To do what?
To do what? I'm sorry.
To address the city code problem, because we're, the, to see what the alternatives are and how to go about it.
Is there a specific organizations that's having code problems with, with the city?
Well, that's, that's part of it. There, there, it's a charitable situation. I believe it's close to where your heart is and, to be established, and we don't want anything going off the records there, so I'd, I'd like to be looked into, brought forward. Mr. City Manager?
Pardon me, I think, going off of some muscle memory here, but I think in talking to the other assistant city manager, Mark Randall, who attended a meeting this past week, some folks in the faith community are interested in trying to establish a homeless shelter but have found some problems with city code. Don't know the nature, I mean, this is relatively, I think that meeting was this past Fri- or Thursday?
Friday.
Somewhere in there. So I think they expressed that to him about some of the challenges they'd run into, not certain what those are. So we could certainly spend more time visiting with those folks, find out what the outcome is, what barriers they may be seeing in code, and provide more feedback to the council so the council could have a more enlightened discussion.
Right, this is along the lines of what we did with the churches to keep in there, and we cleared that up, and I think this would be in our best interest to get a clear and definite resolution.
Okay. Okay, anything else? Okay. Do you want, do you have a motion? Oh, is that sufficient? We'll have the city manager.
Well, in, in our discussions, that's how it went before.
Okay, very good. Okay, thank you. I guess I'm going to get to be the one to say congratulations to our Kansas City Chiefs for winning the AFC Championship, which was very thrilling, and for our entire community in a wonderful way to kick off 2020, so we're just going to enjoy that for a couple weeks and see what comes next. But certainly, the organization and the Hunt family have been a big part of our community for a long time, so it's very gratifying to see their success and happiness. As we know, Lamar Hunt Junior is the owner of our own Kansas City Mavericks, so we certainly offer them our congratulations and support, and best of luck for our team on February second down in Miami. I too wanted to, wanted to thank the community of concerned citizens and the Martin Luther King Committee for the wonderful program last evening. They have been putting this on for over thirty years, and it is always a wonderful program. They're always able to really find wonderful speakers for it, and they could certainly use more community help with, with that moving forward. Like all of us, they're getting older every year, and they could really use some, some young, young energy and financial support to be able to continue that program, so I would encourage you to, to consider that as well. And there's something else I was going to say, now I'm slipping my mind. Well, I guess I won't say it then. Mr. City Manager, is there anything else?
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay, we are adjourned. You'll remember it by yourself. Right. Yeah. Exactly. Thank you. Thank you. I'll get them. Okay. Thank you. I'll get them. Okay. Thank you. I'll get them. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. I'll get them. Okay. Thank you. I'll get them. Okay. Thank you. I'll get them. Okay. Thank you.